So just a heads up, we're being recorded and we can start slowly starting our meeting. First, I just wanted to
There we go.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
Thank you all for taking time to meet with us. One of the goals of the Board of Education for the Boulder Valley School District is to try to meet more regularly with city councils within our geography. As you know, we have seven different city councils in the Boulder Valley School District across 500,000 square miles and 56 schools. So we're trying to do that and we really appreciate that you kept this time with us, even though I know that we're all struggling with some of the challenges that are facing us with the pandemic. So I thought the best place to start since there are a lot of us is introductions. So if it's okay, I'll start with the Board of Education and then we can, and some of the staff members here, and then we can switch over to the Lafayette City Council and some of the staff members that you might have brought along as well. Does that sound okay with everyone? Okay, great. So my name is Tina Markowitz. I'm the President of the Board. This is my fourth year being President, my eighth year and final year, serving on the Board of Education for the Boulder Valley School District. And I am going to make a plug, we have elections coming this fall. So if you know people who are interested in becoming part of the Board of Education, we'd love to have candidates. We're having two candidate forums coming up in March and those are posted on our website. So please just ask people to go there, check it out. It's a great way to give back to your community and it's not always during a pandemic, which is always really challenging. So that's my pitch also. I'm looking forward to run for the Board. Okay, Kathy, you want to go next?
Sure, welcome everybody. It's great to see you. I'm Kathy Gebhardt. I'm the Vice President of the Board. I'm going on my fifth year on the Board and I represent kind of District C. We represent different districts, but we really think of ourselves as representing everyone because we're voted in by the entire district. So really excited to see all of you and to share and to figure out how we can support our communities. Thank you.
Yeah, and District C is South Boulder and I'm a Central Boulder, more or less. Okay. Who wants to go next? Richard?
Good evening Lafayette City Council. It's great to see you all. Richard Garcia and I represent District G, which includes Lafayette. So I'm very, very pleased to have this meeting here with you all tonight. Looking forward to it.
All right. Donna?
Hi, I'm Donna Myers. Third year, going into the fourth, three and a half years on the Board. District D, North East Boulder area and that's all.
All right. Kitty?
Hi, I'm Kitty Sargent and I was elected the same time as Donna and the same time as Jamie because we were both running for office for the first time the same year. So it's great to be with you all and to see you. I am in District F, which is all of Broomfield and then part, the southern part of Superior. And did I say I'm the Treasurer?
Okay. Lisa?
Hi, I'm Lisa Sweeney Moran. It's a little over a year I've been on the Board now and I'm in District A, which I always struggle to explain, but it's sort of the area around the campus, kind of on either side of baseline, running up and down here in Boulder.
Hi Stacy.
Hi, everyone. I'm Stacy Zess. I've also been on the Board almost a year and a half and I represent District D, which is mostly North Boulder.
Okay. Rob and anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. So good to see you all again. I think the last time I saw many of you was two Octobers ago before the pandemic, which seems like 50 years ago. Rob Anderson, in my third year Superintendent here at BDSD, also would introduce the Tivity Miller, who's the Executive Director for the East Support Network. Our Area Superintendent for the East Support Network, Robin Fernandez, is out on leave and so Nativity will be here representing our team that works directly with the school. So so good to see you all. Thanks so much for making the time this evening.
All right. Peter Harkins?
Yes, thank you so much. Mayor Jamie Harkins. This is my fourth year on the Lafayette City Council and we are all at large. We don't have awards out here, so we all represent the entire city of Lafayette. And we have some educators on the Council, which is really fun. So I will go around the room here. How about Mayor Protem Walton?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Walton. I've been serving on the Council for five years. I've lived in Lafayette for 15 years and I have two children in the Boulder Valley School District, so I've been a parent in BDSD for 12 years.
Thank you. Councilor Behanna?
Hi, I'm Chelsea Behanna and this is my fifth year on Council as well. And I am a proud alum of Foothills, Casey and Boulder High. And now have a daughter who went to Pioneer and now Manhattan. So I love Boulder Valley Schools. I'm super excited to meet with you guys again and look forward to our conversation tonight.
Thank you. Councilor Mangan?
Hello, everyone. My name is JD Mangan. I am entering my third year here on Council. I too am Boulder Valley student alum and I'm actually a full-time teacher at Angivine Middle School here in Lafayette as well. So I'm excited to have a good conversation with everyone tonight.
Thank you. Councilor Wong, guess how you joined us? Yeah?
Hi there, Brian Wong. I am starting my second year on Council and I too have a four-year-old son in the district that lives in the BDSD. Really looking to start.
Thank you. Your audio is breaking up a little bit, but we could hear you. Councilor Barnes?
Hi, everybody. My name is Tim Barnes. I'm entering my second year on Lafayette City Council. Five-year resident of Lafayette, have a son at Pioneer Elementary and I'm an educator at the National Center for Public Research in Carl's Boulder. And happy to meet with the Board tonight.
And Councilor Briggs?
Hello, Councilor Briggs or Tony Briggs, not Bailey. I am also alum, I have Boulder Valley School District. I have two girls in Boulder Valley Schools and soon to be a third when she gets old enough. And definitely excited for the meeting tonight.
And then I believe we have our City Administrator, Mr. Sprague, and then also Ms. Heisel on the phone. So you two could introduce yourselves as well?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. It's great to see everybody. My name is Fritz Sprague. I'm the Lafayette City Administrator and I've held this post for slightly over two years.
And I'm Melissa Heisel. You may know me from my usual role, which is the Director of Lafayette Public Library. I am covering Deputy Administrator Doling's maternity leave and I'm happy to be here tonight.
All right, I think we got everyone. Okay. So we had a couple items we wanted to talk about because they tend to be on top of mind right now in most of the communities in BDSD. So the first item is basically, you know, how are we doing school in a pandemic? It's the reopening update, where we are today, what are we doing and what are our plans? So Rob's going to talk about that.
Thanks, Tina. And I will quickly present and just go through a few slides and then happy to answer any questions that you all may have. I think this is the right. Thumbs up when you can see that, so I know that I'm presenting. Ah, wonderful, very good. So as you can imagine, this past year for all public educators has just been incredibly challenging. I'm really proud of the way that the Boulder Valley School District and our community has responded to this pandemic. I think that amidst the challenges, we've done a lot of really, really great things for our kids. At the start of this pandemic, we made four priorities of things we wanted to accomplish. Ensuring the health, well-being, and safety of students and staff, maximizing academic growth and achievement, providing supports to our staff and teachers, and assuring operational financial viability. And we've been able to do that through the course of the past year. We are right now in, we have in-person learning at, to varying degrees depending on level. Our elementary schools are in four days a week in person and our middle and high schools are in two days a week. This is part of what we designed as a five-phase plan prior to this school year with the idea that we would have to go back and forth amongst phases throughout the year. That turned to be true. We started the year in Phase One, evolved to Phase Three, went back to Phase One, and now we're in Phase Four for elementary, Phase Three in middle and high school. And I know that a lot of the change can be frustrating for folks who are trying to keep up with what we're doing. The Board and I, we've committed to making sure that we work very closely with Boulder County Public Health and Broomfield Health as we make these really tough, complicated decisions, putting it in the hands of the experts, letting the data and science drive our decisions, not politics. And so that, we feel like that has allowed us to make sure that we're doing things in a safe manner while also balancing the needs of in-person learning for our kids and our families, which for those of you who have kids in our system or have kids of your own, know how important that is and we've been really sensitive to that. So this is just kind of a, how we returned, an overview of how we've returned to in-person learning in this semester, starting in January. In March, the first week in March, we're going to be providing an update to the community on what the fourth quarter will be looking like. Right now, for us to, oops, excuse me, I'm going a little bit ahead of myself, for us to continue to increase in-person learning from two days to more, we're looking at community cases, especially this B1 variant that we're really watching closely. I'm sure you all are watching closely as well. And then the vaccination of our teachers, and I'll talk a little bit about vaccinations in a minute, but vaccinations are going incredibly well. We have created some neat opportunities and so I want to thank any of our community members from, from the city of Lafayette who have, have joined us in helping us stay in-person by hiring more substitutes, developing classroom monitors to help watch classes, and health monitors. We've been able to not have to close a single school since we've opened January 5th. We've learned a lot from the first semester and, and with those additional resources and our community stepping up, we've been able to, once we've gone back, we haven't had to pull things back. So we know how hard and devastating that is for our kids and our families. We've increased testing. We have a community site right now at Centaurus High School and two mobile testing units that we rotate through our schools throughout the community. We have 160 times, we've done something which we're calling saving the cohort, which is if you get testing in time, you don't have to put everybody out and quarantine them for 14 days. And so we're really excited about to save the cohort. We've done over 1,200 saliva tests and these are, sites are open to community members as well, students, teachers. And so we feel like it's been a really a value add for our community. Again, it's another mitigation factor or layer that's helped us stay open. As we talk about vaccinating our teachers, we're making incredible progress. On Saturday, we vaccinated over a thousand teachers with the help of Boulder Community Health. They've been fantastic. We anticipate that we'll have all of our teachers with, with both shots and 10 days to make sure that, that they're fully inoculated by mid-April. And we have been prioritizing based on a set of criteria, the main criteria being age. But folks are getting vaccinated, teachers are getting vaccinated. We're really incredibly excited. The things that we still have planning underway, spring rites of passage, so graduation, prom, all of those events within the next few weeks, we'll be announcing how we're going to make sure that we have those. Last year, we worked really hard to have in-person graduation ceremonies for all of our seniors, probably some of the most meaningful graduations I've ever been to in my life. I mean, talk about not taking something for granted. Folks were just incredibly excited to be able to participate. It was great. We're going to continue to look to, you know, when it's safe and when the data shows us it's safe to expand in-person learning. Again, we're, we're looking ahead on how do we plan for the 21, 22 school year. Our hope is that it's a five-day in-person experience with opportunities through Bolt Universal, which is our online school, for kids who want synchronous or asynchronous type of opportunities and aren't yet ready to come back in person. And then this evening after our meeting with you all, we'll be presenting to the Board on how are we going to create the right amount of social, emotional, and academic supports for our kids to support them as we come out of this pandemic, make sure kids are where they need to be supported again socially, emotionally, and where we are academically. So that's the, the brief, quick update in regards to reintroduction. I will stop presenting to see if there are any questions, comments, or concerns that we can answer for the group.
And Rob, just a clarification that the Centaurus testing site is open to the community at large, but the mobile testing sites are only open to students and faculty member, not parents, because I tried.
Yes, no, I'm sorry. Yes, the mobile units are, are units that we deploy within, to our schools based on if we're seeing spikes in cases or if there's students that we need to test to save the cohort. But right there on South Boulder, at Centaurus High, you see the trailers. I pass it, you know, almost every day with the big signs on COVID check Colorado, those that those community members are able to test at those sites.
Okay. Stephanie?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I have two topics I was wondering if you could just touch on, what your plans are for state testing or any advocacy around that, decisions around the state level. As you may know, we're considering a resolution tonight at our Council meeting after this meeting. And secondly, wondered about mental health supports, if you feel like you have adequate resources, if you need more, where the gaps might be for students and families and staff, faculty and staff. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll take the first one. The Board of Education last Tuesday passed a resolution asking to pause testing for this spring. And the reason is, is that we have a lot of local formative assessments and our teachers have a really good idea of where we are and where the gaps are. So this year, and we also have 30% of our learners are remote, so that the data set we would have is probably not reflective. We also have a pretty high percentage of remote learners that are learning English language and are living in poverty. So the data we'd get out of this, in this case, will not be useful to us as a measurement or even as a comparative to other schools. And I mean, you could argue there's always issues with some of the comparisons being made across schools, but that was the rationale for the resolution that we unanimously passed last Tuesday. And also the resolution is on Board Docs, the final language that talks about why we passed it. Does that help? Okay.
And I'm happy to answer the second question. I do think that, you know, as students return and as we're trying to support students, we've had to expand some of our mental health supports. We have been opening, we heard, we've been hearing a lot from our high school parents with high school kids absolutely struggling in this pandemic. And so while we're open two days a week, we've opened our high schools on Mondays for those types of supports. Kids can come in, get any counseling, support, set appointments, anything they want to do. As we, as we move forward to next year in our budgeting process, I think that it won't be a surprise to the Board that, you know, we expect to dedicate some resources to the continued support of the mental health of our kids. That's incredibly important. And I think that it just as a community, this is an issue that we're going to have to lock arms on and really understand that. As we come out of this pandemic, you know, a lot of our kids have been struggling. We've seen, we've seen an uptick in drug overdoses, very scary. I'm sure you've all have seen that we pushed out some information last week on the fentanyl spiked, oxycodone and Xanax, that those pills that are making their way around in our community. We do think that, and are really understanding that we need to do as much as we can. And again, I think that, you know, when we talk about supporting mental health, it's a community and school, schools working together to try to do that. And so hopefully that answers your question. I don't know if Nativity, if you wanted to add anything to that based on your experience as the Executive Director in the East Learning Community?
Yeah, similar, the high schools, most of the supports are being done with individual outreach or on those Mondays. The same is happening for elementary and middle. Typically with my elementary schools, principals are tracking students that either are having engagement issues or, or mental health concerns. And then we're outreach to our student support services in the East Network that will help support, help support families either, you know, individually or with home visits or whatever, whatever they're needing, we're reaching out to our student support services. So all of our principals have a tracking system to address those needs and then we'll coordinate with our, with the student support services to reach out.
And I'll add one other thing on our, our Board, receded presentation from Boulder County Health, and they did disaggregate some of the mental health behavior of teens for the last year. So if you haven't had that presentation, it's available. And it was also on our Board meeting. It's, we tape everything, so it's there for you if you want to look at it. I saw Brian Wong's hand go up.
Thank you. Do you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. I just had a question in regard to the testing. So if we move away from testing, and it's just a curiosity, will that impact any state or federal funding potentially, or that really won't have an impact on that?
In this case, we'd be looking for the state and the federal government to waive the testing. And so that's part of the idea for the resolution. It's a great question, is so that we're not penalized for not testing.
Great. And then one question about around internet access. How has that been for the students within the district, maybe in Lafayette, being able to do remote learning? Has that been a challenge due to connectivity or due to socioeconomic issues? Just wanted to get some perspective on that.
Rob?
Yeah, I'm happy to take that question. That's a great question, Councilor Wong. We have been working with our community to, with our families and within the community to ensure that we're making sure that all kids are connected. We have a unique partnership in, here in BDSD with a company called LiveWire, where we actually have been able to put antennas, and over the course of the next several years, we'll do this for all of our schools, have to connect antennas on the top of our, of our schools to then allow us to connect for free, students who qualify for free and reduce lunch, to the internet through, through this unique kind of Wi-Fi network that we're able to stand up. We've also been procuring hotspots and making sure that we connect with our families. Our family equity and partnership coordinators have been reaching out not to schools to find families in need to make sure that we've been connecting them appropriately. And so I think a lot of community effort has gone into this. I think that we've worked with our, our foundation, Impact on Education, to provide funding for some of these resources. And so most of our kids, if not all of our kids, are connected. We feel really good about that. That being said, I do think it's an issue. I mean, I think that the, the access to internet is a utility, should be treated like a utility and everybody should have it. I think that we have some work to do there as a community at large. But in BDSD, we feel like we've met that challenge head-on and have been pretty successful.
Thank you.
Okay. Chelsea, I see your hand up.
Sure. Thank you, Tina. I had a couple of questions following up on that last one that you were answering, kind of goes together. As you sort of pass SROs out of your system and then how, how are you going to look at funding, number one, for how will you use that funding perhaps to support maybe the mental health of students in another manner? And then you mentioned the family equity and partnership coordinators. I wonder what will be lost with the advent of SROs leaving your schools so that, that like, that will keep us connected as far as the community? I'm thinking of the fact that I work in a school also and our SRO does a lot to connect city resources with the school. And I'm wondering how you guys might be able to bridge that with them leaving? That's my one question and I have two more, but go for it.
Okay. And I'll just jump in. We didn't actually pay for SROs in general, just so that we don't quite get the budget. A lot of people have talked about transferring the money, so there wasn't really any money there. But other than that, I'll let Rob go in and jump in and address that.
So those are great questions. We are presenting to our Board on March 9th on how we're going to continue to proceed to make sure that, that, that we're providing kids in schools the level of support that they need that will replace some of the things that you shared that fell within the duties of school resource officers. And so, you know, how do we make sure that we're connecting, staying connected with the city, city of Lafayette and with your chief? How are we making sure that we're providing the kids the supports that they need and providing a safe environment for all kids? And so more to come on that. We'll have a meeting March 9th where we're going to kind of really lay out that plan for the Board. But our team has been working very closely with, with your police chief and, and the chiefs in the surrounding municipalities to begin to start to unpack, how do we do this? What are the levels of support that we need? Those levels of support would come forward to our Board within this year's budgeting cycle.
That's great to hear. I'm sorry, I felt like we said complete and other schools, you know, it's a partnership sort of thing. So thanks for that clarification. And then you were, I have two questions. One, you were talking about mental health staff. You were addressing Mayor Protem Walton about mental health supports for students. I was wondering about mental health supports for staff, teachers and specificity and what you guys are doing for outreach there. And then my other one, just to get it out of the way, is we, the last time we met with you, three years ago now, I didn't realize it was quite that long ago, but, or two maybe you said, is about around special populations and discipline. We were asking about the ethnic and racial makeup of disciplinary issues, special education, flags or anything like that. And you were looking to sort of clean up that data and I'm just wondering what kind of progress has been made in that area?
Great questions, great memory. Yeah, it, two years ago, gosh, like again, it seems like it was yesterday. So yeah, so we've been reaching out with staff. We've been offering actually several sessions around mindfulness for our staff as kind of a first, you know, how do you manage stress and what are, what's the neuroscience around stress? And, you know, it's actually fascinating that it certainly, stressed out teachers don't make good teachers. We need to do everything that we can to, to try to, to help them. And we, teaching and breathing techniques. We brought in a group called Pure Edge, who's, who's been partnering with us. They're a nonprofit, it's been totally free, which has been wonderful. We have certainly our employee assistance program through our insurance agency that we make sure that, that our employees know about. And then we're just, you know, just instructed our leaders to reach out and care for the people you work with and work for you and work with you and make sure that you're connecting them to the resources that we have. And so we've done, we do things, we have a, like a talk show we call the Weekly Wakeup that we do 7:30 on every Monday. And so we've done some of these mindfulness sessions and talked about the mental health of employees in those, in those sessions. And then just continue to try to do everything we can to let folks know that we're here for them. So around mental health. In regards to discipline, so we've done a lot since we've last talked. We went through and totally revamped our discipline policy, our bullying policy, our discipline matrix. We are working forward, we'll be presenting to the Board in April around some of the strategic plan metrics on how we'll measure, measure the disproportionality of discipline for students, whether they're on IPs or students of color. We have, we have embedded that as a goal within our district's Unified Improvement Plan and we'll be pushing that to schools as well as a focus. I would say that the progress we've made at this point, we've gotten the systems much better. As a reminder, every school was kind of coding discipline in their own ways. Every school was, was determining what consequences for what infractions. There was a unified system. So I think at a systems level between the policy, the matrix, we're in much better shape. We've done training and we have a monthly meeting with individuals from every one of our schools to review the discipline data that's actually coming in during the pandemic. Kids, you know, now that we're starting to get back in person, we are having some, some consequences in, in discipline issues in schools. And we're, we're constantly looking at that to understand how can we implement restorative practices or other more positive behavior interventions as opposed to always consequences and always taking away. And so I would say that, that those efforts are ongoing and will continue to be a priority for us. So I appreciate you bringing that up and thank you for remembering that.
JD, did you have a question? Okay, JB, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Thank you. I just, just first of all, just a quick procedural question. Is there more to the presentation or is this kind of you can Q and A?
There was actually a part at the end for questions from the council, but I think it's okay to take your pressing questions out of the way now. We probably won't get through the whole agenda. So I was going to ask President Marquez if you wanted to like triage the rest of it and make sure you hit anything that was very important, but I think it's fine to ask your question now and then we can get back to the agenda.
Yeah, this is the most important thing anyways, right? This is what we want to know. So I just had some quick questions regarding Mondays. I know that, you know, students are only in-person learning Tuesday through Friday through our current hybrid model. On Mondays is usually where we have our staff meetings and dedicated teaching and plan time. I'm curious to see, you know, as other districts are considering opening up five days a week, and I know, you know, our districts have talked about that a little bit. So what is our plan for Mondays for the rest of this school year? Are we considering, you know, going back five days a week or what are our thoughts around that?
That's a great question. So we, we're looking at supports we can provide for students on Mondays, but we also want to preserve that day for planning time for our teachers, especially our middle school teachers, right, who have such little planning time during the week. We know those Mondays have been critical for their success, elementary and high school as well. You know, our, you know, at our board meeting last Tuesday, when asked the question, I shared that, you know, we, those Mondays are really critical for our teachers to make sure that, that they're delivering both in-person and online instruction simultaneously. And I think what's important for everybody to understand is even if we said, okay, everybody come back to, you know, for President Marquez, you know, her comment that we have a third, at least 30% of our high school kids that are fully online and 25% of our middle and elementary school kids that are fully online. And they're at a place where they're not comfortable to come back. We've given them that option and opportunity. And so teachers need to plan, you know, one out of every four kids in elementary and middle school is fully online. So you, so it takes just another depth of planning that our schedule and planning time and the, and the agreements we have, they, they don't, they don't provide enough of that time. So, but what we are looking at is how can we bring in resources and supports for kids in elementary and middle school, so kids who needed to come in that extra day? We're able to do that. We'll know more about that tonight, board members, as we talk about our COVID catch-up plan. And so we're trying to get the best of both worlds, but, but we, at this point, if we were to go five days a week, we would still have this high flex teaching, which is this online and in-person teaching at the same time. And don't feel like it would be manageable for our employees or fair to them to pull that away.
Okay, that, that, yeah, that's, that's good news. So although, you know, teachers and, and staff are working Mondays, students are not in person. And so I was curious, do we provide as a district of food and other resources for students on Mondays? Like other districts are?
So, so we provide food distribution. And the way that we've done that is really almost the distribution of groceries. Now, some school districts, what they'll do is they'll make kids come in for a meal and pick up a meal at a time. We feel like that it's a better use of those, those resources to have several times throughout the week at several sites to, to distribute groceries and food. And so we, we've got alternating times. I, I know that our times have, have continued to switch as we've moved through the pandemic. I believe we've switched it to evenings and we have a couple of evenings a week that we're doing that. But when we, we distribute those groceries, it's enough food for, for families to make several meals. As opposed to the other strategy I've seen other districts use where it's a grab and go breakfast, but every breakfast or every lunch, you've got to show up in the school and grab it and bring it home. And so we felt like it was, it was just more efficient and a better use to kind of package all of our groceries and distribute those in, in that manner.
Yeah, that makes sense. And sorry, when and where do you do this?
So, so it's changed a few times. I'd, I'd have to follow up with you on the specifics. At one point, we had seven sites throughout the district. Nativity, do you know, are we still distributing?
It's always at Sanchez out here in Lafayette.
Yep, we've been at Sanchez, Louisville, Middle. I don't know, Nativity, do you recall? It's not I can get to use information. It's just, it's changed a, a few times.
Yeah, it's changed a couple of times. I know Sanchez has been consistent and over by Pioneer. But I'm not, I don't know what the, what has changed in Middle and High Level.
And can I add one thing too, is I have kids in the district. I actually get a text every time there's new distribution. So I personally know exactly where it is, which day it is. And I've gone to a site just to check it out and was really impressed with the quality of the food and the quantity. And they're extremely generous. So I, I turned down half of it. I, I can't use four gallons of milk. And it was great. It was really great. So they're meeting needs, not maybe just of those students, but maybe some other people that have needs in that home as well.
And I just included information on the chat that gives you the link that gives all of the details.
Cool. I, yeah, sorry, I don't want to keep it going, but just I, I just had a, I wanted to, one more question on this. Do you have to qualify to receive the, the food or is, is it available to everybody?
Show up and you get it. And, and it is at Sanchez, Crestview, Columbine, Emerald, Louisville, Nederland and Manhattan. And that's, and during the day from 10:30 to 1:30. And then from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, we have distribution also at our admin center. So whether you work during the day or you work in the evenings, there's different opportunities for you to pick it up. And it's, we distribute at least 10 meals worth of food items and fresh produce in each one of those bags.
Yeah, the reason, the reason why I ask is, well, two reasons. One is, you know, I just wanted to make sure our resources aren't finite to the point where if we are offering it to everyone, that's great. However, we want to make sure that the families in need that need the, need the food and lunch the most can have access to them. And, and so if everyone has, has availability to it and all that gets taken early, you know, I want to make sure that there is some way to, to, to ensure that there's equity in that program as well. And I know there is. So, and then another reason why I bring it up is because I recall like about two years ago here in Lafayette, we as a city entered into a partnership with, with the district to provide lunches for students during the summertime as well. And that was a cool program here at, at La Montez Park, you know, just down the street. And we were able to distribute those, you know, you know, throughout the summer. And so I just, that is a program that I really hope to see continued on in, in, in the future as well as, you know, any other time, you know, we can collaborate, a city and a school district. You know, I definitely want to see those partnerships flourish. And so whether that's during the summer, whether that's during winter break, whether that's during Mondays, days off, things like that, I just want to make sure our students here in, in Lafayette have food and resources and all the other resources they need on days off of school as well. Thank you.
Great. So I, and, and to your point, we should probably stick to the agenda, although I feel like there's so many pressing questions about reopening. I'm, you know, kind of went for it. Do we want to, do you want to give a brief overview of the strategic plan, Rob?
Very brief. So council members, as, as you'll recall, I started to go through this two Octobers ago and, and talked to you a little bit about it. So let me present really quick. I'll just give you a couple of places to find out more information to kind of, kind of keep track of our progress. I'm very proud. I think our plan is going very well. And would love to commend you all on your recent retreat where you all set some strategic priorities for the city of Lafayette. I, I reviewed some of those documents. It looked like it was really time well spent and you all have a clear direction of where you want the city to go. So, so kudos to you all. Anytime that government entities invest that time in trying to figure out where you want to go, I just think it's a wonderful thing. So congrats to you. But as a reminder to everyone, we have three big outcomes that we're trying to get in our All Together for All Students Strategic Plan. And that's to all make sure that all students benefit from challenging and relevant educational opportunities. We want to reduce these disparities in achievement. And that when kids graduate from BVSD, we want to make sure that they graduate with not just a diploma, but with the skills that they need to be successful in whatever their future may hold. And so based on that, we, I'll just skip through some of these slides. You may remember this busy slide. This is a collection of the 13 strategic initiatives that we have moving forward. They're going to hopefully lead us to that place. Many of that work is starting now. We've been working, we're actually in a meeting earlier today with our district leaders and teacher leaders around some of the work that we're going to be doing next year to improve our instructional infrastructure, which would be the resources and support and expectations for teachers to help make their jobs easier and help them to be more clear on where they need to go. We've always had amazing people in this district and we feel like with the right supports, resources and coaching, that we are going to be able to reach all of our goals that, that we've set forth. If you're interested in any of our equity work that, that you can be found throughout these initiatives, I'd encourage you to go to bbsc.org backslash excellence through equity. And it would highlight much of the equity work that we're doing as a district. Again, I think some of you have seen some of this, but really, really exciting things are happening moving forward in regards to equity. And so in, in regards to that, that's like a, a, a two-minute whip through, quick strategic plan update. I'm happy to dig in at all, or if you'd like, Tina, I can continue to move on the agenda. It looks like we've got about 18 minutes left and would want to get through the enrollment piece. And then I'll just let, you know, just talk a little bit about our network support structure too.
Yeah, let's just keep going forward.
Very good. So as I shared earlier, about two years ago, we broke our district down into three support networks to try to make sure that we're driving resources closer to our schools and community. Nativity Miller is with us here to this evening from the East Network. These are the schools that, that our East Network supports. And so the schools that would be in Lafayette, Sartoris, Angivine, Lafayette Pioneer and Sanchez, Peak to Peak and Justice High School.
One more. There's one more.
There's one more. Ryan, come on. And I miss Ryan. Good, it's probably the most, one of the biggest schools in Lafayette. So, so Nativity, do you want to talk a minute about kind of the support structure and, and how you, what, you know, how you and, and the team that we have supports the schools?
Absolutely. So my role as the executive director is to work directly with the principals. So I spend about 50% of my week in schools with principals and in a normal setting in classrooms and working with them to identify their problems of practice as well as coaching them with the leadership, their leadership skills. And especially with the rollout of the strategic plan. The other piece that we do is we leverage the network system. And so each network has a reading coordinator, a STEM coordinator, an MTSS person. And so as schools identify their need and their problem of practice, part of my job is to, is to leverage the network support staff so that we are responding to schools and we're not creating stuff at the district and then telling our schools what they need to do. So that has been one of the greatest things, I think, that's happened since we've moved to the network system. It also took down the number of schools that each, that the executive directors had. So when I started in Boulder Valley with Rob, I had all elementaries, which was really challenging to not only see them, you know, on a monthly basis, but to also really get to know the staff, the, the students and their data needs. So with this new system, each, each executive director has a smaller number of schools. I have the, the least amount of schools due to the population and demographics in which we serve. But again, my main focus is working with principals, coaching, evaluating and, you know, identifying again their problem of practice. The, the network support staff all report to Robin Fernandez, who is our area superintendent for the East. And her job really is to, to work with the network support staff in their, in the projects that they're working on and to respond to the schools. So we've had a lot of positive, there was a lot of apprehension when we, when we changed to the system, but overall it's been absolutely wonderful.
Thank you, Nativity. And I will keep going unless there's any pressing questions.
Go ahead.
Alrighty. Well, at this point on the agenda is the focus of the 2021 legislative platform. I don't have any slides to support that, Tina, so I'm going to turn it over to you so you can share, share with council some of the priorities of BVSD.
Sure. And this is just really brief. As we mentioned, we passed a resolution in support of waiving testing for the reasons I described. We'll also be looking to advocate for funding to buffer some of the enrollment shifts that we're going to talk about in just a minute, because we did see declines in enrollment. But because we don't have an idea who's going to show up yet in the fall, we'd like to be able to maintain the staff and support for everyone who comes back as well as maintain or increase funding to help do catch-up work. And also in general, can, you know, increase mental health supports, some of the other initiatives that the board has prioritized for many years. And then the other pieces, we did enter, or we did pass a resolution in support of putting limits on THC in marijuana products. There are some new products out that we feel weren't really contemplated when marijuana was legalized. And they're called, you know, wax and dabbing and shatter. We're seeing some pretty negative outcomes with our students at the high school level and it's very accessible. So that is something we also are supporting at a statewide level. So that's pretty much all we've done so far. And that's a summary. So I think we can move on to the next item.
Very good. We'll, we'll just talk a little bit about enrollment trends in Lafayette. And I think that that's all that we have in regards to slides. I'll stop presenting and then we can use our last 10 minutes for conversation. As you can see, the, in Lafayette and Erie, our K-12 enrollment trends since 2013 have been, have been in, in, in a place of growth. This past school year, as you can see, was, was a bit of an anomaly. I think every district in the Denver metro, their enrollment went down. So we don't know that that is necessarily a trend, as the asterisks would show that this is not reflective of typical growth that we feel like we would see. And this was, in high school, we saw less of maybe a drop. Again, that, you know, increasing enrollment. And then middle school, a little bit of a drop. But again, you can see a, a growth incline in regards to our enrollment in Lafayette and Erie at middle school. At elementary in comparison to high school, you know, it's more of a flatter kind of a, of a, of a trend, which, which we'd anticipate would start coming down. And that's an overall trend within our district where our elementary schools are getting smaller and our middle and high school students, those numbers are, are more staying true to the trend lines that we have typically seen. And I, I can make sure that you all have this presentation. I know, I know that, that our team speaks with, with our, our city administrators and friends. I, I know that, that our team has been in touch with your team as we think about growth. And we, we're always in touch with our municipalities as we, as we think about, you know, how our schools are doing, making sure that, that we're dealing with overcrowding. And, and so we'll continue to stay in touch with your staff on these, on these topics.
And I'll add one thing. I, there's one slide that isn't included, but it did break out Lafayette from Erie. And it does, it does show that Lafayette has, its growth has slowed. It was a growth, an area of higher growth historically, but now this area is being compensated by growth in Erie. So Rob, if we could also send them, I think Glenn would know what I'm talking about. That actually shows the city of Lafayette broken out. And I believe they have it by elementary, middle and high school enrollment.
We can certainly do that. Alrighty, so with 11 minutes left, I'll stop presenting and turn it over to you, Tina, to, or to board or to council to impose or ask any questions you may have and have a, have a 10-minute conversation.
Yeah. Richard?
Yeah, that was a great presentation. Thanks, Rob. For the Lafayette City Council members, I just want to say a couple of things. One is I have been a kind of activist in Boulder County for over 40 years and longer than I have been on the board, obviously. And my primary concern around the Lafayette community and the Boulder community has been the Latino community. And one of the things that I do because of my activism over the years is that I do have a lot of connections with the community organizations such as Engage Latino Parents, Advancing Student Outcomes, Sister Carmen and... Outcomes, uh, Sister Carmen, uh, and, uh, others. Uh, but we do hear a lot of, uh, concerns from the Latino community as relates to schools and stuff like that. And, and some of that I know kind of rolls over to some of the policymaking decisions that we're making, that we're doing now. For example, the discipline policy, uh, bullying, we, you know, we've never had a bullying policy before. We have one now. Uh, and, uh, a couple of things that the Latino community has brought forth, uh, and, uh, and, and to the administration, and that is nutrition. Uh, a lot of things around nutrition, uh, uh, how, how, uh, uh, the, uh, food services staff treats Latino kids and all of that, that's been corrected. Uh, and the other thing too that, uh, the Latino community, especially in Lafayette, has been looking at is, uh, how well are they received in the schools, uh, especially with the front office staff and personnel? Uh, how do they treat them, et cetera? And, uh, I know that's, that's also being discussed, uh, at the district level. Uh, and translation has been a big one. Uh, so, you know, the work that the Lafayette parents have provided, or the input the Lafayette parents have provided has really, um, supported and provided a lot of, uh, information to the administration, uh, as relates to certain decisions that are being made. So I just wanted to know that, that because of my activism, um, I hear a lot from the Latino community, probably more so than anybody else. Uh, and, uh, uh, I do relay that information to the administration and to our board.
Thank you. Um, other questions? Not seeing any hands going up. All right.
Hands are hand up.
There we go. Stephanie?
Thank you. Um, I was curious, um, something that we just are getting kicked off, um, well, a couple of things. We have lots of plans going on in Lafayette. Um, we are hoping in the next, um, six to nine months to complete our comprehensive plan. And, um, some of these things have gotten a little stalled in the last year because of the community engagement that we value and want to incorporate. But, um, one thing that I think, um, I wanted to ask your, um, initial thoughts. Um, we just, um, have completed an RFP and signed a contract, um, with a consultant who's going to be doing a multimodal transportation plan. Um, I know that with middle school and high school enrollments and baseline, there's, there's a lot of activity. We're making improvements upstream, um, near, um, the intersection of, um, Highway 7 and 119th to drive more traffic to the four lanes of baseline. And so I'm just wondering, um, with knowing that some of those impacts are coming that are immediate and then knowing the 18-month, um, transportation plan that we're kicking off, I'm wondering, um, how it would be helpful to involve, um, BVSD in this conversation as we, um, uh, get, get started? I'm sure you never hear anything about transportation, right?
Yeah. I, I mean, I would guess that our, um, transportation department probably is involved. It's that where they know each other. They tend to be so well-connected. Um, but Rob, is there a way that you can, um, help make sure that they are connected in this conversation?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll connect with Fritz after the meeting and make sure that, um, that, that, that he has all the contact for our team, uh, both, uh, Director of Transportation and then Rob Price, our Assistant Super Operations, to make sure that, uh, we provide you all the information that you might need, uh, for your study and that, you know, we can see if there's any synergies there. If there's any ways we could work together to, to try to solve the same problem.
Appreciate that, Rob. Thank you.
I think that'll be great. I mean, anytime that we can look to, um, for the multimodal aspects of some of that too, um, obviously that could be, um, a big push. We've done improvements in the last couple of years with some safe routes to school and I'm sure that there is more work that can be done there too. So I think it'll be important, um, not only to have your involvement because you have certainly, um, an, an impact at some peak times around town, but, um, but also just to help perhaps get the word out to the community when we are seeking some of the community engagement and some of those , um, parts and pieces. Um, I also wanted to just stress to the board too, if you haven't had a chance to, um, come visit us in Lafayette, please do. Um, uh, we, we definitely, um, enjoy a unique, um, small-town vibe here. And so we've talked a lot about in our comp, comprehensive plan about growth, the impacts that growth, not just in Lafayette, but even in the bigger impact that the growth of surrounding communities has on Lafayette. And, um, we feel that everybody is driving through Lafayette on their way to Boulder. So the transportation is a big piece. Um, but just also the, the flow and the quality of life for people and the impacts that that has and how we maintain that small-town vibe. And so I think that there is sort of a, an interesting connection with the open enrollment opportunity for families, uh, for Lafayette families and how we can continue to, um, honor that opportunity for families within a school district, but also create opportunities for placemaking and community building in our neighborhoods. Um, for example, when I first lived, uh, moved to Lafayette, I lived in a three-block, um, and, uh, on a street with three blocks. There were about 30 kids and, um, I think every school in the district was represented in that three blocks. And so, um, so I just, um, point that out to you to, um, to let you know that if you haven't had an opportunity to experience that special, um, eclectic vibe and small-town feel that we, um, value here in Lafayette, please come, visit. Um, but also know that, um, decisions you make, um, at times as, as a school board does, um, does impact that. For example, um, there, um, the, um, there are several schools, I don't know what the numbers are, um, but maybe about a third of the kids, I'm, uh, I don't know the exact percentage, but there are several, uh, Lafayette students that go to Douglas Elementary, um, the way that, 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 um, neighborhood school is district. And so that's just an opportunity where it starts to pull people from Lafayette toward Boulder. And, um, and so, you know, when, when the new school in Erie opened, um, just making sure that if there are opportunities to keep, um, keep some Lafayette-centric thinking, um, in, for the schools and for the residents of Lafayette, where are those, where are those opportunities, um, that helps, um, continue to, to, um, underscore what, what we find attracts people to Lafayette and what we continue to value and, and what we hope to hold on to in this community? That's, um, some of the feedback that we've, um, found out during our comprehensive plan. So thank you for allowing me a moment to share that perspective.
And let's try to get one last question from JD and then maybe we'll wrap up.
Perfect, because I don't have a question. It's just a comment. I wanted to squeeze it in before you ran out the time. I really just wanted to say as a teacher in Boulder Valley, I really do appreciate, uh, the efficiency of those vaccines distributed to all of us. Um, it, I got mine on Saturday. Um, and so I really, I do really appreciate the hard work that put into organizing all that. It is, I mean, the line, I'm so happy to see everyone getting vaccinated, vaccinated so quickly. So thank you so much for, to, to our superintendent, to our board and to everyone in a part of the district that, that, uh, played a role in that. Thanks.
Yeah. And thank you for getting a vaccine. That's great. Um, all right. Well, thank you all so much. And of course, anyone can reach out to us. All of our email addresses on our, on our website if you have follow-up questions with any of us individually as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for having us. Um, enjoy the rest of your meeting and to the Lafayette folks. I'll see you over on Zoom. Have a good evening, everyone.
Bye, everyone. Good seeing you. Take care.
Good to see you all.